So I have convened the meeting, the planning board November 4th. We are going to do a public hearing on case number 2020-04, which is the subdivision application by Michael Latulip for tax map lot number 012-002-007. At our previous meeting on October 28th, the planning board did accept the application as complete. So that we are now conducting the public hearing. And I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:38. And the first piece, Tony Raymond, who is representing Michael Latulip and Michael Latulip also are both present. Michael is at the same location as Tony Randall. And Tony and/or Mike, would you like to explain the application of the project?
Yes, absolutely. This is Tony Randall, license surveyor Ashland. The project's located at Owl Brook Road. What we're doing is we're taking, Mike Latulip currently owns a 12 and 1/2 acre lot there. He also owns another 2 and 1/2 acre lot that abuts this project. And what we're doing is he's taken a 1.36 acre parcel, subdividing it out from his 12.5 acres. If you look at the Ashland regulations, the soil type there is a Krogan Lomi fine sand. The slope of the lot is 0 to 8%. And it's in the rural residential zone. And when we do the, look at the soil slope formula for the town of Ashland, he needs 50,000 square feet to create a lot in that location, which is 1.15 acres. So we certainly exceed what the minimum lot size would be. You'll see that the lot has 151 feet of road frontage. And then, of course, the remainder of Mike's property with 179 plus the next 49.96 doesn't bring his lot under the minimum frontage size at all either. We have state subdivision approval. If people can see the plan, you'll see that there's a proposed well site and a 4,000 square foot area, which is way bigger than a septic system needs to be. But we have to show that it will accept a 4,000 square foot per state subdivision regulations. We did receive state subdivision approval on October 30th of 2020 for this lot. And it's really a pretty straightforward, basic subdivision. It's got its own road frontage. I know Mike had talked to Craig Moore at the highway department about if he would issue a driveway permit to that lot in that location. And he was going to, from what I understand, send the board an email saying that he has no problem with issuing a driveway permit in that area. You'll see there's an existing woods rope, but that's not going to be utilized for driveway for access to this lot to it. They will access it through its 100 and somewhere along the 151 foot of frontage that it has. And that's pretty much, pretty much it. You know, the remaining, remainder land is 11.14 acres, which isn't even close to any of the lot sizing stuff that we have. It's all fairly flat. Only in the, I would say, the southeast corner does it go up, you know, in elevation. But it's, it's not that much area to even need to consider contouring the whole thing.
Okay, I do have, I am, okay, I'm sharing the plot plan on the screen for those who are accessing by video. As he was talking, the possible septic area is in this location. You've got a possible well location with a diameter around it. The frontage that he mentioned is along this route. And you said the driveway would be within that frontage of the lot?
Would be within that 151 feet. And Craig was going to send an email, I think, to Sue McLeod saying that he had talked-
He did, he did, yes.
He did, okay.
Yes, it just, I was, it just did not indicate where the driveway would be. But that, you've clarified that, that it's within the frontage of the new lot.
Because we never know where anybody really wants to put their driveway to access a lot that they buy. So it gets pretty difficult sometimes to lock a person into one specific site.
I believe it said no culvert was needed in the email.
Oh, it did?
Yes, it did.
Yeah, because it's all flat right there. You'd create a basin situation if you stuck a culvert in there.
Okay.
Pretty much it from my presentation standpoint. And I'm, you know, willing to answer any questions that I can. And Mike's here with me. And if, if there's questions I can answer, then I'm certainly, he would attempt to answer them as well.
Okay, planning board-
The only question I have, I have a question.
Go ahead Kathleen.
Tony, what about the encroachments over on the left-hand side of the butter? Are those going to be rectified or?
They will, they will be rectified. Mike is currently in the process, I think, of talking to Mr. Sampson about those encroachments. They're not major encroachments, but, you know, my rules say that I have to show stuff like that. But little trail is here, a little, you know, the little camper is just a camper. That can be pulled. And there's an electric outlet, which is no big deal to move. And the propane tank is really not a big deal to move either. So, but before he can sell the lot, those encroachments are going to have to go. Because if anybody bought a lot, certainly, nobody's going to lend them money to buy a piece of land that there are some minor encroachments on.
That's why I asked.
Okay.
That's part of the public discussion that those will be taken care of.
That's, no, that's, that's good. That's, you know, those are good questions. And, but they're in the process of trying to get that taken care of.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Fran, any questions?
No, no, it looks pretty good to me.
Paula, any questions?
Not that I have at the moment.
Okay. And we do have a couple of butters here. We've got Lisa Weiss, who was in a butter across, across from the property, correct? Do you have any questions? Okay, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, well, I think Tony might have answered it. Thank you for your explanation, Tony. And hi, Mike, I haven't seen you in a while. You mentioned that this was in a rural residential zone?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, well, that was my, my question. Because I know some of it is commercially, I guess I could have done my homework a little bit better. But I thought some of these parcels were in commercial zoning. So I was, that was my question was around what, whether business could go in there, a restaurant or, you know, something. But it sounds like it can only be a residence.
The rural residential, that is rural residential zone. In fact, all of the property around you is rural residential. There are a few commercial uses, but the zoning is still rural residential.
Oh, okay.
There may be, there may be a few uses that preceded the zoning.
Oh, okay, so they were grandfathered in.
They might, they might have been. I don't know.
Yeah, Mike has, I built my buildings before they had zoning. So it was before the zoning came in.
Okay.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. So, so, yeah, so all, so basically, other than the existing companies or whatever you might call them, all new development has to be residential.
Yeah. The criteria for rural residential is in the zoning ordinance. Yep. And that gives you, that gives you the list of permitted uses.
Great, okay, great, thank you.
And a couple other things. As Tony mentioned, it exceeds the required frontage for a lot in that area. It exceeds the, the minimum required square footage for a lot. He has also on that plan marked out all of the front, side, and rear setbacks that are required in that zone. And any other questions from anyone? Mrs. Torrey, do you have any questions? Nope, okay, she may have, she may be muted. You said she is related to you, Ms. Weiss. Do you think, were there any questions that she has, do you know? She is muted. If she wants, if she wants to unmute, she would need to do that. Or is she just-
Okay, and you did not mute her?
No, I don't believe, I, let me just, let me just make sure.
Oh, there, here she comes.
Okay, there she is.
Yeah, no, I'm muted.
Oh, there you go. You're unmuted now.
Can you hear me? Okay, do you have, yes, we do hear you. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions regarding the plant proposed application here?
Nope, maybe she can't hear you. Oh, you can hear me, right?
Yes, yes, we can, yes.
I'm her mother and I've lived in her house for 20 years, yeah.
Okay, okay. Do you have any additional questions?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right.
Sorry about the interruption there.
Oh, no, not a problem, not a problem. We welcome input for anything like this. And Tony noted, Tony, I've got a question. When you said state subdivision approval, is that DES-related?
That is DES, yep. So if you look at note one on the plan, it says, on the plans that you have, they're going to be in there because I submitted them simultaneously. So the town, their copies as well as the state got copies. What happened was is I, I got DES approval for subdivision on October 30th. So I'll have a new set of plans for the town. And when I run my lot, I'll run the my lot with those numbers on them. So we're in note number one where there's a blank, it says approval number granted on.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I have gone in and filled those in. And I also added a revision in the revision box that says added state subdivision approval number note one.
Okay, okay.
So just note that that has happened. And I have changed the plan to reflect that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
I don't.
I just wanted to make sure you heard the part that it's all rural residential.
Yes, yes, it is.
Sorry about that, I didn't know she wasn't unmuted.
Oh, that's, that's quite all right. We're, we've all been on a learning curve with Zoom and virtual meetings.
Indeed, we have, believe me.
Okay. So I will close the public hearing at 6:51. And now, at this point, the board does need to make a decision whether to approve the application for subdivision. And do I have a motion from anyone?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And is that to approve the subdivision?
That is correct.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Paula. I would like to add one condition to it. And it's a fairly, I think, fairly standard condition that if and when the site is developed, all applicable permits will be obtained and placed on file, including but not limited to septic system building and driveway permits. Is that, is that-
I'll include that in my motion.
Okay, okay. And Paula, is that okay also?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think we should make that standard language.
Yeah, it is, it is fairly, fairly common. And now, do need to do a roll call vote. Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Paula Hancock?
Aye.
And Martine Badger, aye. Okay, it is approved. Thank you very much, Tony and Mike.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right.
Back to regular meetings.
Well, I don't know. I don't know when it's going to happen.
Yeah.
It would be, it would be nice, yes.
I know. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck with your project, Mike.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Lisa and Eileen, you are free to continue to be at the meeting or that's your choice. I guess Lisa has logged off.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you for attending, thank you. Okay, let's go to the minutes that we skipped over. Any corrections? I did add, if you notice at the bottom of page one.
Now, I was going to comment on that.
Yes. I, I debated whether we, whether that should go in our approval notes today of the minutes. Or I decided at the last minute just to insert it right in the minutes. Because we did say at the time that we thought it was on the, on the state register. And actually, it is not. When I went back and read the master plan chapter itself and when I checked the state registry, it is not on there. It is on just an Ashland, a list compiled by Ashland of a historical resources inventory.
No, I, I think we should insert it.
Yeah, and I, I thought I just-
For clarification, yeah.
Yeah, I thought I'd just leave it in brackets like that to clarify.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else?
It's more of a building of historical importance.
Yes, yes.
Than be not any, what's the word I'm looking for?
It's of historical import, it definitely is of historical importance to the town.
But it's not on a, on a, a permanent registry or a-
And I don't know whether it should or not, that's-
Well, that's a process.
That's a process, and it's not necessarily our process.
That's, that's, that is correct, Marty.
Yes.
The owner could go through that process.
Right, right. Any other corrections on the minutes? Alex, excuse me, accept a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
And roll call vote? Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Paula Hancock?
Aye.
And Martine Badger, aye. Okay, approved. No, I just, okay. I just buried my agenda here. Okay, the, there was sent to you a, another application, an application for a waiver of site plan review. And I think at this point, it is incomplete anyway. There are no signatures either by the owner or by the applicant or, or an agent. And I do believe we need more information on this.
I concur.
Particular.
I do too.
Need to know a little more information about what the actual business is doing. We also need a little more information as to which portion of the lane building. The lane building is an extensive building. And I think we need to know which portion of the building is, is being used by that. So we will be following up on that one.
There's not enough information for us to make a, to act on.
No, I am not clear on what towing, what all is comprised in the name towing and recovery. Especially, I'm not, I'm not sure on what recovery refers to.
Could we also complete the mailing address under applicant/tenant?
Yes, the ma, it's 19 Mill Street apartment two. And I believe that is in Ashland.
It is in Ashland.
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, I was, I was confused because the owner is in Derry.
Right.
And I just, I just wanted to make sure that that is specified, that, that the mailing address is in Ashland.
Yes, yes, yes. So we will attempt to gather additional information and additional detail on this. Okay, so we'll just, we'll table that and we will pursue that further. There, I also included a draft of the 2021 schedule.
From Martine, looks good to me.
I've had a tough time writing 2020 this year. I'm having a tougher time now beginning to write 2021. So, anyway.
I didn't, I didn't see that.
It was part of the email, I believe, that went out.
Yeah, it was.
I got the, I got the waiver and I got the agenda.
And the, okay, this should have been there too.
It was on mine, yeah.
But I will, anyway, we're not necessarily proving it tonight anyway. I worked with the calendar. We'll make sure you get a copy, Paula, I'll send it out again. But I worked out the first Wednesday and fourth Wednesday of each month. And then backed up from the first Wednesday, the appropriate submission deadline for the, for the meetings. I did not schedule, just as we were doing this year, the fourth Wednesday in November, again, was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So I did not schedule a meeting for that at all. And I don't think, I don't think any of these dates interfere with any other holiday or special date. But if everyone could take a look through it just to double check before we do anything.
We're, we're just the fourth Wednesday in December.
Fourth Wednesday in December is the 22nd.
Oh, okay.
Which means Christmas is on Saturday.
I was, again, I was just, I was just making sure it, it didn't fall on the 24th or something like that.
Right, right, yes, I was watching that.
22nd, I don't see there being a problem.
And I double-checked all the federal holidays. And I think all, I think we, all of our dates clear all of those. I have not put a location down for any of the meetings. At this point, I've just put location to be arranged or to be announced. Yeah, I have put down 6:30 as the meeting start. But as far as location, I think at this point, things are still too much up in the air.
Well, Marty, my calendar for next is empty right now, so I guess I'll fill these.
You can fill these dates in. But any, well, everybody, as I said, just review it. Make sure there aren't any typos.
Oh, okay.
Have I typed 2020 instead of 2021 anywhere or anything? And then, at our next meeting, we can approve it. I mentioned, yeah, go ahead.
There's some talk about, and I know I've heard from department heads now that it affects us that much about having earlier meetings. Is that something we should consider or should we just keep?
Yes, we can discuss it.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I know, let's see, what time does the select board is going to generally? Whether that's too early for people or there is six, but that's-
I just thought I'd throw it out there because a department head was at the office today brought up about, not planning board, but BOS work sessions that it would make for him to have it like 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon would work so much better. And I said, I think it's worth to bring up to rest of the board that, that if we're zooming, it might be easier to have earlier meetings. Just food for thought. I know, I, you know, we've kept to the schedule pretty much that's been in place for quite a few years.
Quite a long time, yeah.
But where every, but virtually, everything is recorded, all meetings are recorded.
Right, yeah. I do know the select board probably more frequently than planning board would, department heads do have to appear at various select board meetings to present proposals or whatever. That doesn't happen as often at the planning board. But I'm open to-
Just, just something to think about.
Think, think about until our next meeting. And if we want to change it, we can change it. And we can change, we can really- Pardon me?
I said I personally would like to see him earlier, but, yeah.
Oh, well, okay, that's why I'm putting it out there.
Yeah, even, even 6:00 o'clock would make a difference. I don't, yeah, 4:00 or 5:00, what do you think, Paula?
I think earlier would, would be good. My only question is conflicting with work times for people coming before the board. But other than that, earlier, I think, would be, would be a whole lot easier.
Yeah, I hate night meetings.
Yeah.
Fran, you should- I would, I would go with an earlier meeting.
Yeah. What did you say, Kathleen?
He said, Fran, you gotta speak up. I hesitated.
I just, I just spoke up.
Yes.
No, when it was posted to me today, I, you know, I realized that, I know, this is the planning board. This is the BOS. We're all retired. Why, why couldn't we be a little more flexible and be helpful to our department heads who put in a long day and don't like to have to come back basically to work after they've gone home, so.
My only, my only concern with daytime meeting would be, again, we more often are going to have people, members of the public coming in for applications.
Correct. Paula made that point, but maybe even just having them at 6:00 instead.
But 5:30 or 6:00, something like that maybe.
Well, you can always, you know, for any particular need, you can change the, the time of a particular meeting.
Absolutely, yes, we always have that on.
But for normal business, you know, I'd rather meet at 4:00 than 6:00. That's just me, again, I'm just an alternate. My opinion doesn't count.
Your voice counts, Fran.
It does, it does. So we'll think about it.
I just thought I'd throw it out there.
Yeah, talk about it next meeting. Let's see.
I'm sorry, it was a very long day and a long night.
Haven't heard anything back from legal yet as far as the draft of the excavation regulations. We'll, we'll hear when we hear.
Yes.
Yeah.
And busy they are.
Yeah, I will include, in the minutes for this meeting, when we do the minutes, I will add at the bottom links to a couple PowerPoint presentations that were done at LRPC. One will be, be a link to a PowerPoint on looking at AGU regulations within the LRPC area. Another one was a presentation that we had on nature-based economic development, which I thought was very-
Oh, that's interesting.
I don't have the link for that one yet. I'm trying to get the link for that one. Another link that I, as soon as I get it, will be a quick review of short-term rental regulations in the LRPC area. And then a fourth one was on hazard mitigation, resources for hazard mitigation funding and, and-
Okay, that's always of interest in this town.
So I will, I will get all of the links to those four presentations. I'll just add them at the bottom of the minutes for this meeting, just for reference for anyone to look at them. Anything else? I think this is going to be a short meeting.
Oh.
The other thing I heard at the office today, and I'm a little hesitant of bringing this up, on town manager shared a phone call he got from a member of the public stating negativity towards, I'm guessing it was the planning board to not allow certain businesses in town. I'll, I'll try to, I'm sorry if I'm vague, but it was somebody who never came formally in front of the planning board. So I don't know how this, who is.
I, it would be helpful for us if we, if the, at least the specifics were either, were shared with me or Susan so that we can investigate
Yes.
those, those opinions and information and make a response to it if a response is needed.
So that's why I brought it up because I know the entity never came formally from the planning board. So there was no decision-making done.
Yeah, yeah. But I would like, it would be, I do not want to have negative opinions out there if they're unwarranted. If there are concerns and questions that people have, I think it's best for us to address them.
Yes.
Straightforward with facts, with information.
And that's what I told the town manager.
Yeah.
Because he did not know anything about what this.
Okay.
Paula was referring to.
Okay. So I would like to be able to follow that up. And I'll get some information if I can.
Okay.
I think it's very important because we do, we do want a positive face out there. We are here to, yes, we do have a lot of regulations we have to follow. Some regulations that are enacted by the town and the voters. Some regulations that are enacted by the state. All land use is very regulation-oriented.
Yes, yes, and we have our open meetings, we have our minutes, it's recorded.
Absolutely.
If people want to find the information, that's the first step. Instead of calling the town manager and querying him on something that is not in his purview.
Yeah. And I, and if anyone in the public is listening to this, I encourage anytime anybody has any questions or concerns to please come to the planning board. We will, you will invest, come to, come to the planning board or zoning board, whichever board is relevant. We will investigate the concerns and collect whatever information is needed to address the concerns.
Said it was, I know I presented this awkwardly, but.
That's, that's fine.
It did bother me then. I felt rest of the members needed to know that we do everything that, that we can in order to manage anything that comes in front of us in the most efficient and positive manner.
Yes, absolutely.
But there are rules, there are ordinances that the voters voted in. And those are the ordinances that we have to abide by.
And even any or, any regulations that we enact ourselves, there are certain things that do, that the planning board can formulate and approve. But those are always with public hearings. There's still a public hearing requirement.
That's correct.
Yes.
So thank you for letting me, in my awkward way, put this out here.
That's, that's fine.
We'll be talking about it.
We will pursue that, yes.
Thank you, Margie.
Any other business? All right, 7:12, I will adjourn the planning board meeting.